Brochure on the top, you don't have to review that right now. It's just information pertaining to the LEPC. This past meeting that the LEPC had on July 30th was attended by three people that are assigned to the LEPC brochures. They're sorry, bring it back. And again, you can disregard the brochure. It was attended by three people. The previous one that we had in April, there was Aljo and myself, Krista and Robinson, Ladonna, Shawn, Kate, Gardner.
Thank you.
And Jeff Tucker from Red Cross. And again, Red Cross is a mandatory person or entity that's appointed by the commissioners to be on the LEPC. Again, the top copy is a letter that I got, or an email that I got from Ladonna as she's the LEPC secretary. And wanted me to bring this to you, to the commissioner's attention. And then the next two pages are representatives appointed and had to previously ask to be on the LEPC, and at that time they had said yes. Again, there's entities on here that we see X amount. Again, we just recently, last month moved, or the July meeting quarterly, and it's quarterly that we have these, the last Monday of the month of every third month. We had just moved it to lunchtime because we thought we were not getting any big meeting attendance in the evening. And again, there were three people that showed up this time, Shawn, Kate Gardner, and Ladonna were the three. And I wouldn't enter it except I have some training. And they asked me, or Ladonna had forwarded this to me, and asked if the commissioners would draft a letter to LEPC members, or again, too, I can draft the letter and bring it to you before I send it out, to see if you still would like to be on the LEPC committee. And again, it doesn't have to be the department head, for like example, I'm going to pick on law enforcement, it doesn't have to be microdusted, it can be a designated appointee, as long as they have representation there. Or again, too, Brett King, and I know he has a part-time job, or excuse me, a full-time job up in Mitchell County. And again, we normally have the meeting at the EMS building, and you can designate somebody who was working that shift unless they recall, hey, can you sit in and take notes and whatever, and communicate that with me? Again, just concern or reference for attendance of people that are appointed.
Can you say you're at a lunchtime meeting?
We just did that.
Try that.
We tried that. And again, everybody bring your lunch, or do the lunch meeting, and just keep it at an hour. Try to accommodate the lunch hour, rather than having people have to come back in the evening time. Firefighter representative for the county is Jeff White, and I had received an email from him while I was in Quaid Lo, that, and this is his words, "Me being a fat farmer, unless there's food involved, I'm not missing my mealtime to come to a meeting, as opposed to in the evening time." That worked better for him. But that's the only person that I heard a response from at all. And Ladonna normally sends out the agenda and the minutes from the last meeting a week, 10 days, two weeks ahead of time, to make sure that everybody is aware of that meeting.
Do you feel like it's necessary to have it quarterly? Or could it be reduced to...
It could be, it could be biannually. And I think per statute, I think it only has to be once a year. But, but again, once a year, you're going to be there more than an hour. You know, it's going to be a longer meeting.
Right. I guess I'm only saying that because we had what the health board meeting a few months ago here, two, three months ago. And from my understanding, it's just an annual meeting, and unless there are big changes, maybe that's more of a reason for them to participate once, maybe twice a year, rather than feel like there's a quarterly obligation when there aren't a lot of changes to be made.
But again, there's always discussion about the emergency operations plan, tier-two chemical facilities within the county, complacency and non-complacency with that. And again, it gives the meeting the opportunity, or the committee the opportunity to discuss. Because again, if you don't file a tier-two report with the state, ultimately you can have legalities shoved out of your throat as a business. And there's currently a business over in the western part of the county that is not compliant.
What does tier-two mean?
It's, it's on that brochure, the pamphlet there. Just talks about chemicals that must be reported.
No wonder David and Nundy is the problem.
The date, or the day?
Day of the week. You know, some of these guys lunchtime, they have jobs.
Right, right.
But I don't have a problem. Them not allowed to, tell them that they're not available late to do it. Or if they want to be taken off.
Are you the one that submits that on behalf of someone?
I'm the chairperson, I'm the anointed chairperson. And Rodney, the predecessor, my predecessor had been the chairperson. That first year that I became employed as the emergency manager, Shawn Estrill was the chairperson, and then I got elected co-chairer the first year, just to kind of groom me and give me a heads-up on how things are supposed to work and what's supposed to go along.
It's probably a lot easier to get people meetings in the winter time, too. It's better in the summertime.
I guess I'm just asking, as the paid position that you're in, in emergency management, is this your responsibility? Because I see, you know, you can request this report from facilities, you can file your, submit your annual compliance report, et cetera. Are those your responsibilities in your position? Or is that only regarding this planning committee, which is separate?
The planning committee. As I'm reporting the chair, it's, and I don't want to say responsibility, but again, yes, I can go into any facility and ask to see their SBS sheet. And again, it's a lot of MSBS, SBS, safety data sheet. And they can give me that information. But again, too, if businesses have chemicals over the X amount of limit, then there's to report to the state. And there's a website that you can go to, it's really easy, you just have to do it your way. And again, there's currently a business in the western part of the county that is not compliant for that.
Has that been addressed?
Not yet, no. Again, the fire chief of the district is also responsible for that. And Mr. Lovett and I have talked about this previously. We have a school meeting tonight that I will see you at, and readdress that with you also. And again, main concern applying is that the attendance is not real well. And again, there's emergency procedures that are talked about, not just how I'm going to respond, but entities and agencies within the county, law enforcement, EMS, and different entities that need to be at the table to where emergency operations plan, if we're talking about fire, that ESF, then law enforcement is able to respond, okay, we're going to have this number of deputies, or we have access to highly control. You know, a prime example was the night down with Wilson Lake fires. You know, there was a lot of interaction that night. Sheriffs were out, some of the sheriffs were out, and there was law enforcement down blocking one of the intersections on 181, which turns west toward the lake. There was a deputy there, and a KJP sitting down by the lake. But again, interaction amongst first responding agencies within the county is tough to get people to train. Again, everybody's got a full-time job, I understand that. But if it's in the evening and it's set up, and again, I'll pick on fire, because fire guys like to spray a lot, and exercises with tabletops, or some of those exercises, you know, get to. And there is no mandatory training, of course, will fall to a party. But again, I've also recently addressed the state traditionally with first responders, that mandatory, you're supposed to have 100, 200, ICS 100, 200, 700, 800 taken care of. And the 300 to 400 are classes that are hot. 1, 2, 7, and 8 are, you could go online to FEMA site, and it's a self-test, you can take your time, you don't have to rush through it, erase it, but you can review the information, and then you can go back in and take the test. Again, there's been a high rate of new firefighters throughout the county that these guys are jumping at the bit. I need you to become compliant with this, because again, if there's an emergency, and again, the lake fire was a prime example, we're still in litigation or discussion as to the F-MAG, the Fire Mitigation Assistance Grant, that all resources that we sent over there that night, all the people, manpower, the food, the volunteers, the meals, all that stuff adds up to in-kind match. So then, we're meeting that quota, that we're deemed at 20 percent that we have to manage to be able to get everybody to offset the costs that we spend there. And again, it will be divided up amongst the fire districts accordingly, with the amount of manpower, and it's still in litigation. The state is handling that as one big fire, with all ours, the Hudson Hill, and in Cherokee and Clark County, it's one big fire. The 650,000 acres looks more impressive than if you break it down, so. You know, and I know back when I was still over at the sheriff's office, and Don and Terry and Aljo can attest to, Rodney had to add Columbus Day, what we used to do, the health insurance information that everyone put together, and then he knocked out a bunch of 100, 200, 700, 800 trainings that he used to do also. And again, I'll get information on, to be able to do that for firefighters, that if you come to that, then I may, I may set up a class and say, here's the night of building 100, whoever needs it, show up, we'll go through it, take the test, and get everybody passed accordingly that time. It's still a lonely process, but again, we're trying to utilize, you know, basement to build that class, so.
I guess David, if we need to formulate a letter, you want to set it in and bring it to the commission, I guess, my thoughts are, and I'm sorry I wasn't at the last meeting, I thought I read it on my email when I got home the next weekend, but I'd missed it, hadn't even thought about it the morning you came over here to come. But I think, I guess I would say that quarterly is probably important, though the summer one is the problem.
And maybe bump that back to the balance.
And maybe we don't need the summer one, maybe we need the April, September, January, whenever it is ones, and kind of skip the summer one because of the activities and everything going on. But I guess I would think in the letter, you just say, tell them the importance of being there, and if they can't be there, to please send some designated person.
Okay.
You know, I think there are some valuable information exchanged there, and I also think it's good to have some interaction between players.
Okay. We'll work on a lot of this.
And I think some of them just need to be reminded, it's one of those things that, you know, it just, those in file 13, as it comes through the email, through the email, you know, goes in here and comes out here, and sometimes it doesn't stick there.
I guess my thought is to expect a volunteer committee to get together on a quarterly basis, as that supersedes our expectation for our own departments to have any mandatory meetings. That's a concern. I would think that we should be more interested in mandating our own departments to have these particular meetings. Not that this shouldn't happen, I'm not devaluing it, I'm just saying, I find it interesting that here we are assessing an exterior group's need to gather, when we don't even have requirements for our own groups to be, because I know I mentioned to you at the beginning of the year, asking you what your interaction is with our own EMS department, because you're a separate department, but it's all interconnected, obviously. And this committee actually brings those groups together, which is a good thing. You know, maybe it needs to be a mandatory part of our departmental communication, then if it's, if it's important, you know.
Well, again, with that, too, again, I have tabletop exercises, July 30th, no, excuse me, March 30th, is that when that was going? I don't remember about the eastern park major in the basement, they had a tabletop.
It was in March.
I think it was March 30th. And again, with that, LEPC paid for $9,000 of that grant. Again, everything, meals, meals were in kind match.
Do you have a separate fund for this?
For LEPC? It's a non-funded agency.
So you just applied for grants at that time and used it?
That's correct, yes, yes. The LEPC chair has to sign off on the paperwork, and again, had communicated with Don and Shawn that I was doing this, and Shawn is the chair or the co-chair, and Don is the secretary, that I was applying for this grant. And again, the LEPC grant paid for $9,000 in that. I had paid for the meals out of my budget for that day, but it was an in-kind match that went against what we had to match. Lots of incident command vests, or incident command, when an accident happens, those people have those vests that you can say you need to go talk to the public information office, the PIO, or the logistics section chief. And again, it has that verging on that, in command. And then those people have designees that they were through out in the field that they can use to close. And then, you know, it was in kind of match for just people that had been to the planning meeting, and then participated that day, got to use their salaries as in-kind match. So I had to come up with like $2,250. And out of that, I just paid for meals. So $9,000 we got from the LEPC. And I guess we might be reimbursing the state yet, but it will hopefully be getting there.
Is that annually, or the one time?
LEPC hasn't paid no grant that they do. Mitigation, in fact, I talked to Terry last week, Jefferson County, Kansas, I know the emergency manager there, he used to be a K-DAM employee, and his courthouse got a generator through the LEPC grant. As our courthouse here doesn't have that, and courthouse in the basement, the commissioners are in the meeting room, is supposed to be the incident command center. But again, we have a generator, so if power goes out, we do. And I got a bunch of weak generators, we can run, but it'll be a lot of cost.
In our conversation, we discussed, we're going to do, we got one digging up the power up to sheriff's office and the courthouse.
Because I've had a conversation with the sheriff before, that he's been told, and I don't know if it was a company insulin in his stride, it saw him with a generator shut down his throat, but, excuse me, that he needed to get a new generator, because the one we have over there is quite little.
Yeah, I never spun that part of it, geez.
So again, that is a possibility, that I could possibly apply for a grant to do that. But again, it'd be an in-kind match also. But, you know, if, straight plumbing, if that would be the contractor that could utilize, if they would graciously donate their time as an in-kind match, the time, they won't. So.
I doubt it.
Well, going back to the meetings, I mean, I could almost see your beginning-of-the-year meeting, I mean, that's a lot of preparation on you, but you could lay everything out, and you could have a mandatory meeting where department heads are required, and, you know, take the whole day, even if it's combined, you can combine it with something like the health, the health board meeting, or, you know, it could be an all-day ordeal, where they're getting paid to be at work anyhow, and it's part of the, you know, group effort. And then your other volunteer members can make it. And then if you have your, like he said, if you skip your summer meeting and have two fall, or one, a spring and a fall, or something like that, you could go from there with any changes. But at least in the beginning of the year, you're laying everything out, and I don't see why we wouldn't expect our parties to participate from the department heads that are adjunct to that, yeah. It has a lot more weight if you send out an email that says mandatory meeting, is what I'm getting at, to put it plain and simple.
Right.
And it can't be, I understand it can't be mandatory for everyone on there, because a lot of them are volunteers, but you could at least have a quorum to hold your first hand in your first-of-the-year meeting.
And then the next thing, EMPG grant, emergency management performance grant, we get that a year, or I should say we get that, since I've been on board in the past, this county had received that grant. There's just paperwork that you have to do, but the commissioner has to, the chairperson for the commission has to sign off on the table.
This one, this is the...
Money from, yes, that goes into the budget. And last year was about $7,077, I think, and it's supposed to be similar to that again this year. And that's based on pockets, is the primary funding number for that.
What would be the amount last year?
Seven thousand, seven, seventy-seven, oh, spraggle on seven thousand. And like, for example, Dickinson County gets $27,000, and Norton County gets about $17,000. It's based primarily on pockets, and it depends on how many people, how many counties apply for that also, because they contribute.
I need a motion to sign this application for emergency management performance grant funds.
I still move.
You have a second? Five seconds, there's discussion. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
But, votes? Morning, Henry.
Thank you.
I need a copy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And then one other thing that I have, the last attachment in that, bundle of paperwork that I gave you, inter-jurisdictional agreement for mutual aid between fire departments. And again, again, FEMA will start not funding events, or they will start taking money away from if you don't have a mutual aid agreement amongst your local jurisdictional fire departments. And again, that's, Michael and I had talked about this last week, called the first director O'Hare, myself, had talked about this last week, and I told him that I had had something on the computer, and forwarded it to him, he looked at it, he said he'd like to see the highway department add it, as we utilize some of the county's equipment sometimes for fighting fires. And I added them, and then also added them on the signature page on the back. And again, he, I think he's next on the agenda at 9 o'clock, and I told him I would present this to you guys, and look it over, I don't need a decision or a vote, or anything right now, if we want to pursue this, or have it, have it as a mutual aid within the jurisdiction of Lincoln County. But again, we previously talked about that, we should have it in place.
I think you already have it in place, but...
Okay.
Does it include the highway department, too?
I don't think it does, but...
Robert's chair, is there any person involved?
O'Hare's last name is in this stuff.
Okay, I'll correct that.
He told you that.
No, he did not, he was gracious. On the public works part, or on the...
Coke, it's capital H.
Thank you. So that's all I have. Pressing to talk.
So do we need to approve this, Don, or is this something that they do between that, since it's in the kind of fire districts?
We would have to approve the county highway department, I would assume that portion of it would be our responsibility.
I think we should probably approve that, and the highway department had it, did a document.
And again, I can correct this spelling, let's see, I'll bring it up, I'll reprint it now, and fish cop three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Sure. Well, if Kathy shows up, we'll have to stop, not Kathy Robinson, she's going to run the tights, good.
Sounds perfect.
First thing we have here before you start is this inter-local agreement, in your jurisdiction, I guess, do you have any problems with it?
No.
Since we added the county highway department?
No, but I looked at it, I think that's fine. I know it's not very often, but there has been instances when we've used the water tanker motor rakers and some police to assist in a large fire.
Don said we have an agreement, but didn't include the highway department, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would be, if he was, just had it all formal, black and white on it, so.
Okay, I would have a motion to allow, you want that, Michael, to sign inter-jurisdis- inter, whatever, did it, inter?
Jurisdiccional.
Agreement with the fire department.
It's probably an acronym.
Do you want to look at this?
I saw, I read, I have my copy.
This is, this is one that's got your name spelled right, Michael.
I would move to allow Michael to sign through the highway department, including them in the local.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Allow Michael's entering to the agreement with the fire department's mutual aid. Questions? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Michael. So, Don, you want a copy of the big one?
You want to wait till the signatures are all on it?
Yeah, I'll have it.
Okay. You want to use this, does he want to use this one as a signature copy, or I don't know?
I'm sure he can give me a copy if you guys need a copy.
We do.
We have a copy.
We want a copy of the signed one.
Yeah, once they're all, all the signatures are on it.
Sounds perfect, I'll get this signed, return it to you, and we can get it to the other chiefs.
Sorry about that, Mike.
Nope, not a problem, not a problem whatsoever. Last week you guys required about the, what we had spent so far on the engineering for the structures up in the northwest part of the county. He shows here that just shy of $1,300, he hasn't so far, and that includes mileage for just... of thirteen hundred dollars, what he hasn't so far, and that includes mileage for just one trip, he didn't charge for the second trip when he came out to the commission meeting, due to the fact that he wanted to discuss the permits, and he also presented that agreement for monthly engineering services. It does include nine and a half hours of labor, one field visit, hydraulics, and permits on three of the structures.
Permits on three locations.
Yes.
Is that itemized, the permit fee that he charged to do the permits?
On here it just said permit fees of two hundred dollars.
So, we paid him and he paid the permit fees?
Yes.
But he didn't charge us to, well, it's in his hours.
In that month and a half hours.
Oops, sorry.
It's not about a washing.
So far?
Are you saying for a month of contracting?
I'm saying for that project, if we have a project in months, it works out, but if we don't, then we're stuck with eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, I guess, is what I'm saying, you know? You know, we have another one that we need done, you know, but do we have one every month?
I wasn't under the impression he was making a sign for twelve months, it was more or less cost.
Yeah, this is a monthly fee.
Yeah.
But is it for a minimum of twelve months? I don't, I didn't see that in there.
I think, I think that was their intention.
Yeah, no, I thought it was.
I don't think you could hire him according to this for one month, I mean, you could, and then stop using their service, but...
I think, I think it was a regular monthly visit, probably, is what I, way I...
But there has to be a min, a set minimum then in the contract, or it wouldn't make any sense, I mean, you have to say, it's like a lease, you're gonna do it for at least six months, and at that point, it can be re-signed, reevaluated, you can exit with a thirty-day notice, it's a typical contract.
Just by what I'm reading, I'm assuming that they need an annual contract at a cost per month, but...
So, then to justify it, we would need to know the next five or six projects that would be looked at over the next five or six months for him to stay busy, or to utilize his services, which doesn't exist.
There's things that come up that potentially could make it work, I'll discuss that as we go, there's a couple other things that I have here that I think we need to look at, one is, I need to visit with him on Apache Marina here, to look into removing that road there, and so, Sillin Inn, Washington, is maintenance, is a nightmare because it is there, and that's where we had that slough where we fixed back in two thousand and seven on that FEMA project, and in that process, the pond dam was the road, and it got moved where the dam is away from the road now, and therefore, the guard fence is not necessary, it would make it much easier for, in my opinion, the guard fence is not necessary.
You're talking about just west of fourteen?
Just west of fourteen, yes. I'd like to have a commission visit with him and see if that could be removed, and utilized as a way to get in there and maintain it. It's Washington, the road without the guard fence there, it's next to impossible to do it, but...
I don't have a problem.
Is that the priority project that you would want him to look at?
That's something that we do have for him to look at right now.
Something they could look at that we have the money to do.
I do also do that, so...
It's not a...
Visit with Mr. Coates, he has some concern there, he'd like us to be able to get something done there, so that's something down the road, it's gonna be a key factor, being able to prevent that, is whether or not that guard fence can be removed.
Do you feel that he needs to look at the project for that double arch bridge that is...
Hi, excuse us.
...deteriorating on union?
We, we'll take care of you right now, Kathy, thank you. Michael, interrupt you?
Good.
Yeah, there you go. Hi, Kathy?
Hi, how are you guys?
Okay, how are you?
Good, I just, um, just wanted to, for a minute, introduce our junior high school principal, junior high principal, Mrs. Walter, I was starting junior high part, and, just once again, want to thank you, because you all are very helpful, and, anytime I ever need anything with the buses, I always text Mr. O'Hare, and he's always great about getting back to us, and, and, and doing what needs to happen with girls, or at least in terms of, and I just always appreciate them, that's a huge weight that's lifted off myself, so, and DS Westline, since we've contracted with them, so, my name is Walter, he's doing a great job, and we welcome her, and I know somebody who may help her, and somebody who may not, but she taught quite a while in the district, and got her administration license, and so, we were...
Cracking whip.
Yeah.
I knew she was mean.
They don't have whips anymore, they don't have whips anymore in the world.
So, we are law enforcement, cooperation there, county attorney, insurance problems, communication problems, we try to work with them, and you too, certainly, I want a safe school.
And we have our security, we have our video, and it's not audio, but we have our video security that's in all the common areas, and gym and hallway, nothing happens, teacher turns or operate, and that has paid off, especially this summer, so, we have some situations that is, that's helped us identify, take that information to Sheriff, he's always sitting over the road that goes up to the golf course, and, and he's there reporting, and there's officials that they go over at the elementary, so they're always very helpful, and just watching out for spirits, because we do have a problem, even though the highway department, state highway, those signs, you know, always helps monitor, and I think that's really why they're there, so...
Was that, was that video system in use when they broke into the gym there? When they went, they went the door to the gym, is that what I'm sure, two years ago?
We don't, yeah, we don't, we did not, we didn't have a video, we don't have a video camera in that area, and that, that, if you could go back years, this is what I was, I should have, I'm originally from here, that door, the ability to get in that door, people have known that for probably twenty years, that, that door, just, 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 for just information, because that was how the board built me in on that, and that's why we changed the whole mechanism to that door, took out the door handles, we changed the logs, we changed the actual lock-in door, so, we, and I was unaware of that, you know, these are little things, until something happens you're not aware of, so I'm sure that everybody can attest to that, so, but I think we have pretty much a lot better feeling for the whole property, we have a situation over at the elementary, and I did have my kids, we have to the sheriff, and so, it's very, it's just been very helpful, so, but, all the damage and monetary damage, that was done before I got here, so, that's why the board put it in, and we're making our last payment in September, and April, and it's been sort of just well, the buses to have the community come in, and I think it's a good thing for the community, so...
Do you still have those drug meetings with the contract company, or how, how do they relay, in the past, they relayed dangerous places to the highway department, I think they're the best meetings, and are they relaying them to you, or are they going, okay?
Yeah, Mark Thompson, who's a part of DS Westline, he's the general manager, he just felt like that was essentially the best way to go, is to lay those to me, and then I text Mr. O'Hare, and that's worked out really well since I got here, I don't know what the system has been, but it's immediate, they'll let me know, and I will let them know, so, I mean, for the most part, it's, it's worked well.
I just want to make sure we have a system for...
Yeah, we do.
Blind spots.
And I think if it did harm, Mr. O'Hare would let me know, but I think that's worked well, so, it's pretty immediate, and they can take care of whatever, whatever the problem is, and it, it helps having the bigger buses, you know, the smaller buses, what was just on a van chassis, basically, taking your head out, the bigger buses, they work so much better, we have not had a problem with the buses, so, it was, I think it was a good decision, because we haven't had, going down the line of twenty busing, hopefully, but six will start from that one, and run, or go out, so, but we appreciate your support, because...
Anything, if you do us.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
Are you teaching it? Yeah, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is.
Okay, well, thank you, just appreciate it, appreciate it, so, there's anything we can do?
I'm teaching.
Yeah, fine, thank you for the guy, he helped us out tremendously, he took a whole bunch of, I don't know, like, I don't know how many, appreciate it, because we have contacted someone to be doing, so, we appreciate that, so...
Can be coaching second semester, it's for places, so...
They should be.
Yeah, just got some things on it. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you, Michael, for taking the time.
I was asking if you think that you wanted Tanner, or anyone from Kirk and Michael, to go and look at that double arch bridge that we talked about, that's deteriorating on union?
They're at Ash Grove, is that the one you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
It's something we can do.
I mean, I, does the board think that it would be appropriate to come up with a list of at least five or six areas and/or specific projects that we can use, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't afford contractually to go for six months, I don't know what he wants out of that, out of that agreement, but you're saying that it doesn't specifically say in there, correct, it doesn't say here?
I didn't notice anything.
But I don't see why we can't have plans laid out by him, I mean, they're basi, he'll basically give you step-by-step instructions to follow, so, that should make your job a lot easier, if you can pick, you know, the top six priority issues, I'm mentioning that because it's in my district, it's been brought to me by at least a handful of people, unions, a highly traveled road, if we don't pay attention to these stone bridges now, we're not gonna have them in the future, and that's one of the few things that we do have, have you said that typically every year, you look at contracting someone to do some...
Yes.
Have you looked into that at all?
This year, I think our money's plenty tight, I think I can...
I like, I like any excess money we have, just going in with this project, whack, I think borrowing money out of different places over to us.
I've had to lose some job loans, because we have some of the other bridge options.
Do you guys have any issues in your districts that you know would need some sort of engineering oversight?
Well, there's several, one of that bridge got closed out here.
Juggler?
Yeah, you know, there's several around that we need business engineering on, but how far in advance of adding the money to do this project, who are going to be the engineering on it, and the budget this year is extremely tight through the rest of the year, I mean, it looks like there's money there, but when he gets done with his chips, there's not going to be anyone near the money there that there was, so... We have permitted, he's worked on the permits for three projects already, haven't he?
Yes.
I don't know how far out you want to permit.
A little more than a year.
It's out, I don't think you can go very far, because they're only good for so long.
Yeah, you're, you know, you're, you're looking, you got two projects in the works for after the first year, but...
Yeah, two there, should be three if we go ahead and do some...
Or that falls, you know, or that...
That's something else that, when I visit with him, if we're not going to be doing a county engineer position for him, consulting engineer, I will also need to see if you guys will help me consult with him to run the train engine, everything on that, to go ahead and know what we want to do there for sure.
I just...
Know the size of the structure, what we may need to tie it for, as far as if we're gonna put a half tanker in there, or a couple of roundcoats to handle, or what I may do.
Well, if it were myself contracting with the county, I know I'd be a lot more lenient on giving extra time, advice, and instructions, if there was some sort of continuing contract, and I don't see how...
Well, I think it's something we can look at after the first year, but you're talking about, you do it for the next four months, you're talking about three thousand dollars in particular, so, my projects that aren't gonna get done this year.
Thing out there shouldn't take too long for him to make that determination, John, I mean, that should be a two or three hour job, or less.
So, are we gonna bring him up here and pay him for two or three hours, or are we gonna contract him to give, give us the rest of his time and start on the next project? I mean, anything he puts into writing now is surely good for next year, you know, if you had a priority list...
So, we've already got three projects permitted from there, so, how many projects do you think we're gonna be able to accomplish?
When we don't have anyone employed by the county who knows how to coordinate any of these, something's better than nothing, in my opinion, I mean, we haven't had any kind of working list to check off, I mean, you know, it's said that there is one that floats around, but that's not the same as actually having, knowing what you're budgeting for, we're gonna approve a budget that has no list associated with it.
I believe it's a little box, not much clearer, so, the way it sits right now? The way it sits right now, yes, just about every range, you know, it's sizable range, it's one of the, there's, there's basically zero volume tension, not even...
You know, he's only gonna be down here for two or three hours, and they didn't take enough without him, I didn't look ahead, get days for this, but, I don't see telling the project for four months, this year, we're already, three projects a week's ahead, so...
But he did say at the table, when he was downstairs and we all visited, that he would help us with the strategic project planning, that he said many counties do that, and that's what their firm can offer us, I mean...
I know what he said, but there's no sense paying him all that money for projects that we're not gonna do for two years. But there's no sense paying him all that money for projects that we're not going to do for two years.
Going back to the Highland Lake dam. They had an air in there that listed the watershed district or the NRCS office as the dam operator technical representative. And they actually have nothing to do with that dam since it's not in a watershed district. And it's privately owned dam where the county operates it since we have a road over it. So, since we are the operators, we have to designate someone that position. That's an engineering position. So, we'll have to have someone like Kirk and Michael engineering be on there as the engineer for this dam.
Where is that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The Highland Lake dam.
What is that?
South of Silver.
South of Silver.
Highland Lake? Where are.
It's similar to what they were talking last week.
Just east of that.
It's on Elk Drive, just east of Sixtieth.
On Elk, okay.
Not much of a lake anymore as far as concerned.
I know where you are on Elk.
Whenever the melt, they speed on it.
Yeah.
It's all still.
I've heard that, too.
So, that's something we need to look at, naming somebody to put in that position for the emergency action plan. He also stated that we are responsible for doing inspections on that dam every three years. I think the last one, he had on file.
Who's he?
Matt Long.
I thought that was probably what they were getting at.
Was that?
I said, I figured that's what they were getting at when that came across the other day.
Matt Long? Who's he? Where's he from?
He's an inspector for Amic Foster, a company that.
Hired by State?
Water Resources, yeah, State hired him.
Okay. And so, do we have any other dams like that in the county? Or is that the only one?
As far as the highway department being involved in or the county itself, this is the only one.
That's the only one.
Or a road cross.
Well, we just, we go over the top of that dam different. We don't traverse the whole dam. Oh, that's what you're doing, I heard.
Road cross.
Almost the road goes under the dam itself. Which has caused a lot of issues for a lot of years, if I'm correct.
Yeah, it's been ongoing. Twenty years now.
Do they do, heard them have to do dam inspections?
I do not know, but I'm sure that.
Probably do.
I don't. If they don't, they can.
But what you're saying is it's not just an inspection. You have to have someone tied to it permanently.
For an emergency action plan, yes.
So, we can't assume that they're going to just volunteer for that?
True. But they may volunteer to do it. In the event, if there is an issue, they get paid for it. You see what I'm saying there? There's a, as far as I'm concerned, there's zero percent likely that this emergency action plan here will ever go into effect. If anything will ever need to be done for emergency measures due to this location. That being said, the state is still requiring this, whether we like it or not. You know, it happens on numerous watersheds around the county, too. He did say that they're working on that watershed dam up on David Wacker's property. And I guess it falls into a high risk. I guess how, I don't know exactly what it takes to fall into high risk, but it has to do with the total height of the dam and what gets affected downstream in a breach. The total inundation.
I think when we were doing that FEMA stuff, anything that had a house that was in the breach area was then classified as.
I think that one takes one house.
Didn't they change the standards? They have to be wider with a different slope or something?
Oh, yeah. They've changed a lot of them over the years.
Well, they did. They changed from state to federal or federal to state or something there about five or six years ago.
It's a constant battle.
So, when I visit with them about this other stuff, I'd like to visit with them to see if they would be interested in what they would need in compensation to be listed on the emergency action plan. To kind of give an idea of what. I don't know if just having their name listed on there, they want compensated for that or not.
They may have another one somewhere, too. They might know what to.
But we also have to have an inspector, right?
I need to do some research on that and find out for sure. But according to his records, he's just an engineering firm. That's the most recent that he was aware of. Now, I'm sure if an inspection was done, you guys would have been involved in it. I would have hoped.
I think it was just ignored.
Well, I don't know when that was, because shep.
I think that was 2009.
We had to do some work out there. Shep was involved as far as tree removals and stuff like that. I think it was probably, that may have been two thousand, I think.
Yeah.
Problem is, the thing has sealed it in so much that it's not a big dam anymore like the load you were getting. It just doesn't hold the water.
Is it the High Capital Bridge?
Uh-uh.
It's just.
Yeah, that's my, that's my deal, too.
I think in the long run, I think we'd be making that. We might abstain from landowners along the way, but.
Is it used now for just a cattle farm or?
There's some farm traffic, though. We're not going to touch that.
As far as the water being used for livestock. I think someone does use it.
Well, pond is on one person's land. The dam is on another person's and it's been.
And then we're the ones in charge of it. We're between the rock and the hardest rock. You know, the person that owns the dam itself or the property in which the dam's set, he doesn't want anything to do with it either because he gets no benefit.
Right.
Doesn't even get the water.
So.
And I don't think the person that gets the water would care if it was gone or not.
Is that something you could? Yeah.
There's several options the person could do, I think, to get out from underneath of them. I think closing the road could give you one of them.
Yeah, a doctor and engineer, I think that needs to be one of the options. It's been an ongoing problem since I, before I came in there. It's not going to end.
No, not until they change their ways and do some other calculated measurements. You know, that's something I asked him. I said, did they check the depth of the pond to actually see how much water it's retaining? And they said that doesn't fit into their factor on how things are done. They figure as maximum capacity, like was built yesterday, that's how they got to do it. That's, and I guess I understand a little bit, you know? And his reason behind it was, and it kind of made sense, but having seen photographs of a few ruptures or failures in real life, the dam never fully goes the way you think it would. You know, I think it would take an act of terrorism to blow it up from the very bottom of any dam.
It would just be a hole like that.
Yeah. You know, that's nobody retains water from under it much. You know, he did say.
It'd take twenty minutes with a boat and a.
Yeah.
Under the ground and just figure out another water.
It's going to be a waste of time. Neither one of them want ownership of the thing either because they're going to be going through the same thing with it, you know? So, that's going to be the downfall to the way of the state. They're not going to say it and be afraid of this.
So, could you get back with us and let us know if that's something that Tanner Yost can look at?
Yeah.
As far as doing it, getting, at least we can get our inspection up to date and then we'll worry about what we're going to do as far as assigning an engineer name so that the state knows that we have that covered. Maybe that's something he could combine on the day that he looks at the Gargoyle.
Yep. Give you guys a quick update on Chipseto Pond. I guess we kind of discussed about it earlier. Hopefully done this week. It should be a decent time next week to finish up the remainder of the patching. Very little blading's been done. Most of the blade operator's been helping sporadically, maybe one, two, maybe three blades have been able to go out and get some work done here through this. But it hasn't been real consistent. I'd like to get that done and get started on our rolling operations right here. Get that all buttoned up here. Hopefully the grass will put you on. We'll have to go over a lot more than once.
Rum's bringing it up, so.
Get that done. We've been kind of plagued with losing several employees here in the last week or two. Lost three, two to other jobs, one to come back to school. Potential to lose maybe another one or two of survivors.
Do other jobs and?
Yes. Well, yeah, been around a lot here. So, we're going to be down here going to the mall. Also get lots of applications that.
Aren't you having any exit visits with these people, by the way? Is there money?
Two of them, yes. They basically, one of them anyway is performing. I got an offer that they couldn't refuse. The other one says it's mine. And as always, you know, it's been difficult to get decent highway employees to apply for the positions. Oh, that's 145. Covebridge, we should be able to gravel that shortly after we get done with the position. See, I guess it's going back to my order. They got the handrails off board, false word and everything out there. Contractor should be out of here tomorrow, I think, is what their plan was. Have the dirt contractor came in and everything shaped back up to where it needs to be. And then seed contractor will come in and that stuff all meshed up.
Two Eightieth Road, south of the Westfall Road. I think they're still having issues there on the rains. I don't know. I don't think it's cutting in near as bad, but I think it's still slick on top. It's raining rakes. Rings, maybe boppies, just drive down there and see what kind of mess it is. I had a phone call a week, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, just before we start with Chipseto. And I told them that we were busy resurfacing roads. It probably wouldn't be good. But, well, and I haven't talked to Bob. I haven't seen Bob. I would commend the county guys with Chipseto and Barnard area. The people are very happy with the politeness and the way they direct the traffic. I know it was a tough time with the pipeline people coming and going all the time. And it's just one of those things. They did a good job.
Any plans for the concrete material that we spent money to crush?
Nope. Nothing official. Well, I discussed trying to uncover dirt roads or something like. Did mention other south silvers, so. Hasn't been top of my priority.
Have we listed our equipment for sale now that the new builders are in? Any interest in any of that or?
They don't have it up on site yet. They came out Wednesday. Did photographs, descriptions and everything. As soon as they get that stuff up, it should be good. It'll be on the October third sale for the property.
Our warranty.
I've figured it'd be up sometime today, but that's what I'm guaranteeing sometimes. It takes several days to get all that stuff uploaded to the website. Also, seasonal employee we hired. It's helping out the bridge crew. I'd like to move him to full-time now that he has a position available for that location. At the end of the pay period, we'll start the next pay period with full-time position status.
Do we do a motion today or do you need to wait till? Do it today affecting the next pay period? Doesn't matter, don't it?
It's probably one of those things that you should at least advertise.
We are advertising or?
I believe you are.
May only be a week or something. Well, I guess pay period will start next week. Then we can go back. We can go back. We can go back and change the status as of the pay period. So, why don't we wait and we should see what kind of applicants we have.
Are those applications coming directly to you or are they coming through HR's department?
Coming through HR.
I've had quite a few people tell me that they've never heard back a word. Not a question about an interview, nothing. So, that's a concern of mine. So, every department goes through HR? You don't take your own applications for departments?
I'm not sure how the department's.
Well, I get the chat. I get the background checks and references and stuff like that. HR does it.
Are we paying for background checks?
No. They're just basic, unless they see something in the thing. Control to the E for nowadays is your Facebook.
Anybody else have anything for Michael?
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
I might ask, how many motors do we have?
We have five.
Are they all the same or just take that about three foot?
Five foot.
About five foot.
It's five foot, but it's, you'll pay your five foot on it. I think they're too busy dogging the motors and rocks. I think they're too busy dug in the mowers and lost, because it's really a problem for the mowers, I think. We gotta double from there here. I've seen more up our way going some.
That's part of the reason why that they mow along with the grader, don't they, normally?
Try to.
It's always the graders mowing or grading. What are the instructions that you give to each blade operator as far as, like he said, the boulders along the road?
Like, they know they're not supposed to run over them. I mean, if they're out by themselves, it's an issue. They're out with another grader, one's pulling the windrow and they mow that stretch and it'll get, the other, the mower will come around and mow and the motorator will kick the windrow back over. So there's not a windrow in the way. When we have the time employees available, so do it that way. Otherwise, some of the blade guys may mow the one side that does not have a windrow on it. Sometimes they may be like Howard said, you know, they're not gonna reach the whole five foot because they have to offset due to that windrow.
What are they supposed to do with the boulders? What are they supposed to do with them? I mean, you're saying they scrape them from one side to another and don't mow over them. I think, yes, that's common sense, but what, I mean, what are they supposed to do with them? I mean, it's obvious to me, driving, that some roads, they've been picked up. Other roads, the same boulders on this side, then that side, then this side. So what is the instruction that they're given as far as, what is protocol? What do you do with this?
Until we have time to either roll them, they're gonna be in windrows. And we try to roll in the wintertime when the ground's frozen. If we go out this time of year and try to do it, you're gonna end up pounding in the ground and then you're gonna have rock reappear, you know, like stone ledge rock. It becomes a hassle. You know, and then you'll catch it with the motor grader and it kicks out and you have a whole, little clutter in the middle of the road. It's, it's not easy to deal with these rocks. There's not a quick, easy answer to dealing with them.
Does each, I'll call it an outpost, you know, like you have one in Silven, you have one in Barnard. So does each outpost have its own pickup?
Yes.
One or more?
One.
One pickup. So is there a location where if those were to be picked up and gathered, that they could be taken for, I mean, is that not something? Say you had thought of it ahead of time, is that not something that could be put with the concrete and crushed right then and there?
Could, you know, they can be put, used as rip route around the washout structure or something like that.
They do pick up some of them.
Some get picked up, yes.
Well, certain ones must do it all the time because I see roads where there aren't any, but then there are other roads where there are always some, and some are huge.
Sometimes they get rolled in the bottom of the ditch. Last winter, we had attention to roll a lot of rocks. It just never happened. The weather did not cooperate for us.
When you say roll, you mean with the roller?
The grid roller, yes.
And there's only one?
Roll it.
With the roller, well, one tractor will hold it. We got two rollers.
Okay.
We've got some bearings out of the deep end of the legislature, too.
And they call it, what, a nineteen forty something?
Fifty-six.
Nineteen fifty-six, right. We bought a tractor, opened it years, but it doesn't have the ground clearance to...
Ground clearance and torque pull at a higher speed. That was the biggest fail to fall with that tractor.
When you say you leave the, the rock in the windrow, are you saying until the next time it's graded or you're just saying until it's pulled over and smoothed out?
Then we'll, each time it's bladed, it'll carry over in the windrow from one side of the road to the other.
Don't you think that some of the drainage problem that we're having is a windrow that is like a ledge against the, especially if it's against the lower side where the water's to be running off? Because remember that, the pictures I showed you last time I brought you pictures, the whole center of the road was wet and carrying a puddle. And you got a ledge built up on either side. Sometimes it's the embankment because it's been dug in, other times it's the windrow holding it in. So you've got this wash that's happening where there's no actual outlet for the water. So if the windrow is left on the lower side especially, and it's thick, I mean, my assumption from the things that I've read, we can look at online, you know, tutorials about how to...
Of course.
The, when you smooth that out, there's not supposed to be a lot left. There should be only enough that the water can seep through.
Not yet. There's not supposed to be much of a, no. Just probably should be, could be flooded out before, I guess it's a fact today.
I think that's not the problem that we're having with the, with the regular maintenance. That and a few people have told me lately that they've noticed their dirt roads are being regularly graded, almost habitually. Whereas I was just up speaking with some people from Ottawa County when I had the North Central Regional Planning Commission meeting. And they said they don't touch theirs hardly all summer, you know, unless there's a heavy rain where they get, they notice, noticeable drag.
The reason why they're being bladed more regular this time of year than they have in the past is due to the amount of weeds that will come up on those roads. If we do not blade them, they're gonna become six-foot haul with weeds with one-wheel path down the center of the road. And we've tried that on a few roads and then people tend to get upset about that, leaves, weeds banging against their brand-new trucks, crashing, banging their mirrors. It's easier just to blade it while the guys are there versus trying to get a mower out there and keep that stuff mowed down. You know, in due time, there's a lot of dirt roads I'd love to see get grassed over to the point where we do have to run a motor grader on some of the less traveled roads, but it will take time to get us to that point.
We can't get to that point if we don't have a plan for where those locales are and what to do in a particular region. And I don't think any of our blade operators have that in mind, as far as what I can see or what I've been told or et cetera. I mean, I'm not out there, so I can't say this one does and this one doesn't. But, for example, when, when I got a couple of phone calls about Colt Drive where I told you that it would be a good idea to try some of that concrete mix since it's so sloshy there. That's either do it or don't. The washout on that corner, when you get to the next mile intersection, is so bad that the person's fence atop of the literal ledge is six feet high. And it will erode until the point where it collapses it and then that's on us. So those are the kinds of things where we either set them as a priority and deal with them now, or, I mean, we've talked about potential litigation using volunteers. That's the kind of thing that's gonna be more of a liability for the county than anything else. So I, I'd still like to see us put together a plan and say, you know, in this particular township, these three roads, this is where the attention needs to be. If that blade operator doesn't know that, then how can he focus on them and spend more time on them in his route? He has X amount to get done, I understand that, but if there is any extra time to be spent, how is he or she supposed to know where that, where the focus is? Giving a map just of each person's route to them and, you know, X marks the spot, tell me what we can do in this area because I know this is a problem area?
They're asked all the time.
I'm sorry?
They're asked all the time.
They're asked? Okay, but isn't that your job? Isn't it your job to tell them that this is the process?
If they have a problem area, I can't travel every road in this county. Once a month. I mean, it's just, I would have no other time to complete it. So therefore, they are on those roads on a regular basis. If they have an issue, they will bring it to us sometimes. Sometimes we take them issues that we see.
But for example, the road that I'm talking about there, um... Colt. Because I, I sent you pictures of that one on Colt and that intersection. That's not, that didn't happen this month, that didn't happen this year, that didn't happen in the last five years. So we're talking a long-term issue that has yet to be addressed.
Yeah, I guess I would put it as the fact that it's, doesn't hit high priority because it will be a pretty good expense for a road that is not traveled that often. I guess that's where I put my viewpoint into it and my management skills is the fact that it's a low priority road. That when we have gravel roads that are traveled more often than that, I tend to give those roads more time, more energy, more effort, more money. You know, if a person wants to go in there and fix that road right, you're gonna have to import dirt. I mean, thousands of cubic yards of dirt to elevate that back up to its pre-existing elevation to help eliminate the erosion. You know, when that road was originally put in there in the twenties, or whenever it might have been, it was up at the fence level at one time. And over time, yeah, it's erosion. It's gonna degrade down to where it is now. And there are numerous spots throughout the entire county and this entire state and this entire country that had the same issues. But you, you have to understand that it's not the greatest right now. And I've visited with the operator, I've visited with the landowner about that location for two years, three years now, about trying to help it out a little bit. Because I view it as a huge safety factor and a blind side at that corner. But the landowners at this time are not interested in removing the fence. They're always to drop those banks down to open up vision and elevate the road up. So therefore you have to import dirt and that starts costing a lot of money and a lot of time that your crews are not gonna be doing other stuff.
I think the point that I'm making is that over the years, nothing has been done there. Not anything, not anything to slow it, not anything to address it. It's been, I mean, when I got out there, the road was closed, temporarily closed. It's not even a, a county closure. It was just a sign like, sorry, we can't get to it, so it's too eroded.
Morning, John.
So that, that is the issue that it hasn't, there's been nothing done to address the erosion at all and it just continues, let alone, I understand what you're saying. You wanna get it back up to par. I'm not saying it's a priority that you spend that kind of time and money to get it back up to where it was eighty years ago. But when you say something like prioritizing, we have eighty thousand dollars worth of crushed concrete with no purpose. That's twice someone's salary for, that could be working for a year to coordinate jobs. Do you see what I'm saying? That to me is where the mismanagement is, right there. So if we don't hire someone and we're gonna refuse to spend the money on that to do this coordinating, just like we're talking about not paying three thousand dollars to the potential contracted engineer to help us. But we're gonna spend that eighty thousand dollars and let it sit for now, what, three months already? You know, that, that to me, there's, there's a weight difference there. And maybe you don't consider that to be you calling the shots on that. Maybe you felt that that burden lies on this commission and, and maybe it does. But these are the things that if they're not, this is why I asked you in the beginning here, what's the plan for the concrete? We were estimating at first a hundred thousand dollars. It only cost eighty, but that's still eighty thousand dollars. That's two people's forty thousand dollar salaries to plan and to work some sort of strategy over these issues that have been gone, uh, that have gone unaddressed for thirty years plus, before your time, I understand that.
Were you in here when we, you weren't in here when we were talking about that?
Correct.
If anyone wanted to go, I said I would go if no one wanted to go, but she indicated that she'd like to go, so.
And are you willing to be the voting delegate for all of the things that occur at this meeting and K work?
When they do create down into this...
No one else is gonna be there, so.
Yeah, well, they have voting.
Are you doing, are you going?
If I go, I'll probably just go for a clip session because I don't really have much budget to pay for it.
There's K work and K, so you don't vote on different...
Uh, yeah, I'll do that. If, do I need to get a form, motion?
Well, I have forms, so I'll bring the forms down and then I can do it then.
Sure.
Okay, it's ten o'clock. Budget hearing for two thousand eighteen, budget. I guess I would just point out a couple of things that I see in the budget is that two thousand seventeen, of what we budgeted in two thousand eighteen, there is a little decrease in the amount of budget for expenditures in two thousand eighteen. Around three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars. However, the bad news of that is that it's going to require more money from the taxpayers a little bit. But at the same time, valuation went up seven percent. But we need to raise about two hundred and sixty-six thousand more dollars. The mill levies will go down, two and a half mils, or a little more, two and a half mils. I guess I would address the reasons that there was an increase. Law enforcement, around seventy-five thousand. We're anticipating the sheriff adding a patrol and a jailer. County attorney, about thirty-seven hundred dollars. Two thousand eighteen is an election, so there's another fifty-five hundred dollars needed for elections. Courthouse general, due to insurance and stuff, it's gone up about a little over four thousand dollars. Employee benefits, it's where most of it is. We estimate going up a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred. County health department, another eight thousand dollars. Then the mill levies for economic development set of two mills, so with the increased valuation, that's another eight thousand dollars at the expenditures. Hospital is a ten mil, so that's another forty-one thousand dollars. And rescue is a half mil and that's another two thousand dollars approximately. I would say that the sheriff was in to visit with us about law enforcement. He seemed to have an increase in crime, law incidents, so he feels he needs to add another person to the force. Our jail has been occupied more than it was in past years, so he wants to employ another jailer and that's a safety issue, basically. So instead of having one jailer, you know, I have two jailers to monitor prisons, prisoners. And the county attorney asked for more money and that deals a lot with the fact that we have a lot more cases being filed in our court system. I think the county attorney and the commissioners will continue their discussion on how to handle the influx in that and the money that's gonna be required. That's basically where we were. We, I think our intention was to, under tax lid, is at one point four percent. And that's what we tried to hold all the departments to, except those that I listed had increases of more than one point four percent. Health benefits, the county is probably going to, it looks like we will ask employees to pay a larger portion of their health insurance. That has just got out of control. It's up another seven point seven percent, I think, this year. I guess as I look at it, the federal... I guess as I look at it, the federal government inability to work with the Affordable Care Act is putting the pressure on, on the people down below. I don't think there's any doubt about that, that the uncertainty of what's gonna happen is part of that. We also were informed a couple of weeks ago by Michael that federal highway dollars that are coming in, the state's now going to keep twenty-five percent of it instead of ten percent. So there is a decrease there. So, you know, I, I think you can look at the national and you can look at the state, and what's going on there really does affect county budgets and county operations, and that's all there is to it. I hope we do not lose a lot of employees, because I think some of them are probably going to take the big cut, because they're gonna have to put more out for their health insurance. The fifty cents, we did figure in fifty cents, whether we give it or not, that's, will be determined the first of the year. We did budget a fifty percent cent increase hour, hourly increase. Do any of you have any comments, questions? Glad to answer. You need a copy, Howard? Do you have a copy? You want one, Jim?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to say, I'd like to thank you for your efforts in bringing the whole tactic down, but just from what you said, just from your comments this morning, our, in the county, we have three groups of people. We have the commissioners and the tax people, we have the taxpayers, and then we have the criminals. Well, it's almost to the point where the taxpayers are gonna become criminals too, because the taxes are, are higher. Economic development can't exist in Lincoln County, I feel, and that's the reason why, because the taxes are too high. It's good that the mill levy went down two and a half mils, but the taxes went up, as you said. And I don't know what industry or business, they look at different counties where they'd set up their business, and it seems like under our tax system, it's impossible to have economic development under high taxes. I think we need to look at one item, a line item, and continue to strive to have as a goal to lower taxes. And as you mentioned, certain special, special areas, if you would not have added those this year, it would have gone down. So it's gonna be a continual process to, maybe have to cut down some, or eliminate some programs. Law enforcement and roads and bridges are probably two areas that not gonna be in change to, gonna have to increase those. Could you increase those and overall decrease? We look at the other list and see what, what the.
I mean, I don't disagree with you at all, Howard. There are so many things that I think are not under our control. I mean, that we are mandated to do, and the cost, but I don't think we're trying to overspend. I think we're trying to find a, a lower level. I think we let you bite the bullet two years ago and pay off all those lease purchases and that Vesper Road project certainly have helped us. And I'd hoped it would have helped more, but who could see the law enforcement problem coming down the road? I mean, you know, we don't see those kinds of things happening, you know? Yeah, we were, we saw, we knew there was being some increase, but I don't think we saw that it was going to cost us that much money. The other thing that does worry me, and I will say this is a concern of mine in the next three years, is eliminating our reserves by not raising taxes. I guess, I'm sorry, you know? We have a fairly good reserve to, to keep money for next year to pay. But if we start deteriorating that and suddenly we have a major problem, we're gonna have a, a large increase like we had that one year. I, I, I don't know. I, I wish I could say that we can lower them, but I don't know that we ever will, you know, lower them. Now, can we keep them from going up so much? Yes, we can try that, but can we reverse the trend? The state government, federal government haven't been able to do it either. I mean, you know, we just have a terrible time. The other problem that we're going to have is with the way agriculture prices are today, when that comes around to the valuation of farmland, and that number starts reversing, we're in trouble. I mean, we're, we're in deep trouble. You know, when that fifty-six thousand million goes back to fifty million, what are we gonna do? You know? That's, that's a real concern of mine, because I can see that happening with the price of grain today. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it, that we're gonna see that, so. Of all the jobs, I don't like this one.
So the amount of two thousand seventeen added lower in taxes, the actual expenses for those departments in two thousand seventeen, is that?
Where are you at?
Just on page one. Or, or is what's budgeted for two thousand seventeen, and then budget authority is two thousand eighteen? So what's the nearly, pardon, I do words, not math, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the stimulus department? Is that the, is that the anticipated increase? Am I reading that properly?
Are you taking the four hundred and forty-four thousand minus the two seventy-three?
Yeah.
Uh, what that is, is what it's saying is they're budgeted to spend four hundred and forty-four thousand, but of tax revenues, two hundred and seventy-three thousand will fund that budget, the rest of it will come as revenues.
Gotcha, alright.
Or other revenues.
The add for war, I mean, it's what we base our mill levy.
Gotcha.
And they have funds coming in from charges from bills, billing.
If you look on page twenty-two, that's where the difference between expenditures are. However, the current year estimate, when they went through the budget process, they might have decreased what the actual budget was versus what the estimate is that appears here. Because we adjusted and cut some of the twenty seventeen budgets down.
Might be.
Or, sorry, against, about twenty, it's twenty, Tom.
That kinda gives you an overview of sixteen, anticipation of seventeen.
There we go, yeah.
And what eighteen's gonna be. Even though we budgeted eight point two million last year, we, we're anticipating we're only gonna spend about seven point nine million.
And depending on the money left at the end of the year, that affects the nineteen budget.
Yeah, because we budgeted an actual eight million, two hundred and eighty thousand, five ninety-nine, but they've cut the center column, meaning the twenty seventeen estimate to seven million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. If the departments can't cut where they think that they are, then it eats into our cash carryover, and then at that point in time, they probably won't get raises. But if we can get everybody to cut down to the seven point eight.
And I, I assume that the employee benefit increases health insurance?
Health insurance, there is some capers.
Capers, social security.
Yeah.
Any of those benefits on those.
And then we get social security. And the other part that is affecting the employee's salary is the state income taxes being withheld from their checks, has gone up too, so.
Right.
So they're seeing a decrease, well, they're seeing a decrease right now.
Right.
Most of them.
Well, and I do think we should take a minute to discuss the employee benefits, because I don't know that that's clear. While the employee themselves is going to see almost a hundred percent increase in their costs, because they're going from, I think, what is it for a family plan, one hundred and ten? The current year employee portion is a hundred and ten dollars, and they're gonna be looking at two hundred and seven dollars next year, so it's almost a hundred percent increase on their pay scale. However, we are incurring a total overall increase of seven percent, so they're going to absorb that seven percent. And then we're going to also kick back the difference there, because, I mean, it looks like we're just charging more for the employee to have their plan, but with the price increase, they're paying, we're, we're cutting it off at a flat ten percent right now. So for next year, they'll be paying ten percent, so for example, your family plan will cost two hundred and seven dollars and forty-one cents potentially, as opposed to last year's one hundred and ten. But that increase doesn't help our budget.
Right.
Because we, our total expenses are going up, so they're really not paying, out of the total plan costs, they're not paying that much higher of a percentage of their own individual plan. But they are absorbing the increase that is coming down the pipe overall.
And you guys haven't officially made that decision yet.
We're absolutely friends.
Well, that's what's budgeted, that is what's budgeted.
The other thing is, there's a lot more plans available under the state plan, so we're anticipating that some of them will move to those lower cost, because if we go to a ten percent, that we're kind of forcing them, you know, to, to do, do some other things.
This year, there were two plan options. Next year, there'll be five options. Those three additional options are all less of a cost, they're a higher deductible kind of concept, but they're less of an overall cost, so that could leave some room for maneuvering in the benefits budget.
Listen, they're broken.
Right, right. The family plan yearly is about twenty-two thousand dollars per employee, so out of that, they'll pay, you know, two hundred, two hundred and seven a month, and we pick up the rest of that. So per employee, they're getting their salary or hourly wages plus that twenty-two thousand coverage, less two hundred and seven dollars a month out of their pay. And that fifty cent raise, I mean, it doesn't necessarily cover that, but it closes that gap. The individual employee only went from, potentially will be going from sixty a month to ninety-two a month.
On page seventy, you have one of the general funds, a couple things right there. Well, you look on economic development, and I just mentioned that a long ago, we weren't, that's part of the reason we don't have economic development in our life.
That's what we give to the economic development.
And we, taxpayers pay that amount of money, and the high taxes, we keep people from coming in, so we really, we're really hitting their toe.
Economic development is a voted on bill.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a voted mill levy, and, but yeah, that's the way it's funded.
Would you be surprised how much, how many things they have going on?
Is that, is that what mill levy is?
Two, it's a two mill.
Two mills? And that's the same way on down with the hospital maintenance?
The hospital is a ten mill, yes, it's a ten mill.
Ten mill, cause that'd go up forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, because we had basically four million dollar increase, yeah.
Right. Valuation increase determines the dollar amount that they will receive for X amount of mills, so two for economic development, ten for the hospital, based on the valuation.
The other mill levy is services for the elderly, but we have not, a year ago, we reduced it to seventy-five thousand, we left it there, excuse me. And the other mill levy is rescue, down the ways, it's a half mill, it's set. I think those are the only ones that are direct mill levies. Think the transportation bus is a matching one, we need to, is that right? We have, we, we match, state matches that.
Just a, just a small item of something I noticed, that the abandoned cemeteries is two thousand, how much did you allow the contract for moving?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay, why, why, where's the seven hundred dollars gonna go then?
Well, we don't know what the contract's gonna be next year.
But, but it will, it will go back in for the, it's a.
It'll reduce.
Yeah, it's a reimbursement force for next year's budget, I mean, basically lowers the amount of money we have to.
It'll lower the amount. It doesn't disappear, it's lower.
Makes more cash available.
Yeah.
As, as the top dollar on page. Page seven, unencumbered cash balance. If it doesn't get used, then for two thousand nineteen, that dollar amount, it becomes cash.
It starts out as an offset for your needed taxes to make up the difference for the total budget. You can, you can basically take your total budget minus cash carryover, and then see what you need to raise. But I understand what you're saying, you're saying if the bottom dollar is increasing every year, that cash carryover means zilch. I understand that. That is unfortunately a governmental mentality that has been pervasive across the United States in spending, so it's that use it or lose it concept. And just as Aljo said earlier, the state, the federal government, the layers, the bureaucratic layers have all done this same process, and to reverse it overnight is impossible. However, there needs to be a mindset change as far as that necessity, you know, needs and wants. That needs to be something that's addressed objectively, not just because we. Right, right.
This is like when you got. Bring on the ball. And how much balling can you stand? That's kinda like this budget. If I financed the way some of these people want, I couldn't stand the ball now here from you guys. But if I decide not to provide you roads, I'll get balling too, won't I? It's a no win situation, Jim.
I would have thought there were been more people here, the people that I talked to, it seemed like there's more of an attitude in the county concerned about taxes, but when you really get down to it, where are they?
We've had.
There's not much I can do, I mean, I have to, I have to pay, you know? If I own the property and live in the county, I have to pay.
That's the majority of the budget hearings that we've had since I've been in office, no one has. That's the majority of the budget earnings that we've had since I've been in office, and no one has gone, no one.
You know, Howard, paying those property taxes, I, I don't like them. The only one good thing that I can see out of that is the people that do not live in this county, the no land. That's the only way we collect any money for the services that they demand. They demand roads to get their crops to market, you know? And that's the only way we can, we can get any of that money, basically, is through property taxes. That's the only good thing I can see about property taxes. But that's, you know, because we don't get any sales tax from them, we don't get any purchases from them much, but it's, it's that property tax that we kind of get reimbursed, reimbursed for, you know? We don't have, you know, we have a, what, a couple of places that buy fertilizer and chemicals. You don't get a lot of that spot out of the county, I'm sorry to say. I mean, a lot of that. And most of those companies are large, and they're not located here, they're just branch offices. So it makes a difference.
I saw Colorado was advertising that their state is the largest employer in the state. And it just reminded me, you know, Lincoln County, the county is the largest employer in the county. That's a very dangerous position to be in. It's not healthy. It's not, it should not be a point of pride. It should not be a point of boasting. It should be a scare factor for everyone. When your government agency, local or state level, and now we're looking at the federal numbers too, when they are the primary employer, actually, in our county, it's about forty-six percent if you combine local, state, and federal employees. So we're almost one to one as a payment ratio. One private pay person for one person collecting their paycheck off of that citizen. So it's, so when you look at it monetarily, it's two to one. You're paying for two, if you're a private pay factor person. So that will not sustain itself. I mean, that's a, that's a faux pas that we see all over the place, and that's not looking good for the future. So we do need to think about cutting spending within the parameters of how big our population is. And, and the sad part is, you know, like our roads and bridges situation, that's not gonna decrease. There's a certain set physical, you know, portion that you have to take care of, and the borders are there, and they're not moving. So as income decreases, the expense and the time needed to take care of them doesn't necessarily decrease at all. So that is a very contentious point of deliberation there.
Does he have any other questions? We declare the hearing closed. We'll need a motion to adopt two thousand eighteen budget.
I would so move.
Do I have a second? I will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I do have two points of discussion. The one is my hesitation about budgeting for the line item on the nursing home without knowing what our statutory regulation would be. I know that we have to publish it and adopt it within a certain timeframe, but we haven't received any legal counsel about budgeting that particular dollar amount. We were unaware of this particular statute, as far as I see.
But we won't be spending that money for four hundred and five dollars. I'm sure by then, we will have a opinion.
Okay.
Is the line item you're talking about the home for age of improvement?
Hundred and twenty thousand.
No.
It's actually under nursing home. There are two separate funds going into the nursing home expenses. But it's out of the general fund.
Gotcha.
My other question is, we were giving an increase to the county attorney's office, but the increase that was requested was based on adding a physician. And we kind of said that the table's position toward an additional county employee is a negative. But we're still going to give an increase in funding to the department without approving that additional employee. So I'm a little hesitant as to why we're giving any increase without the decision. You know, if, if we're saying, no, we're not going to put a county employee on the county payroll for that department, then why give the increase that was requested to any capacity?
Well, I think she wanted to hire that person because the increased workload, so I would anticipate that she's going to put that towards paying someone to do the additional work. And we don't have the cost of deploying, we don't have the benefit package for the employee.
But basically, what we're saying by giving the increase is, well, here's more money to work with within your budget. You know, there's still this looming question as to whether there's going to be an employee added, because there hasn't been a final discussion on that.
But we are not adding the employee. We're not adding. If there's additional employee, she'd add it.
But I'm under the impression that the current budget, the way that it is, we're already paying for that person. And she said that, last, last week, when I was on the phone, she said that four hundred out of the forty-six hundred was for rent. So that leaves forty-two hundred dollars a month that we're potentially using to pay a part-time person half of their salary. There was never official. But we're not paying for that. We're only.
Is it included in the quotes or something?
Well, we shouldn't be paying for that. If we are paying for that, that's not appropriate, because we're, we were, we're billed for half of her clerical person. So she has. And that's what it says on the receipt. But this is why I asked for an itemized expenditure of what we're paying to O'Hare Law, and you guys wouldn't follow through with that. So I'm still concerned about that.
I think it varies probably from month to month.
But you're saying there's a full-time and a part-time person?
Well, she has a full-time and a part-time person. I'm not saying we're paying out of the house.
But don't you think that'd be appropriate for us to know, we're paying the bill there?
I think it varies probably from month to month. And I don't think there's any use in adding one month extra, one month more, and one month less. It's just, here's, this is what you get to work with, you figure out how to make it work. I think that, you know, going back to what Aljo said about the jail, there used to be one or two people in there, it was dated, seven. So that means that two cases have doubled or tripled.
Any other things? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Anything else, Don, for this commission?
Oh, Corey provided, he didn't put a dollar amount on, so then that way, there isn't a bid in case you would require it to be bid out to Row.
That's that metal work I was talking about, go behind the gutter. That's, that's what he's using as a scope of, of work to be done. I told him not to include a dollar amount in it, because I didn't know. My opinion, he's there doing the work, rather just have him do it with, with a dollar amount. But I don't see bidding out, have somebody come in and do something in between the roof and the gutter, when he's already there.
Already got the gutter bid?
I don't know that we can legally do that.
Yeah, we can do it.
Because why?
Because it's already there, and it's just an add-on to the contract that he's already got.
I believe the state statute says, though, that we have to bid out any construction remodeling.
I don't think that, when, when you're doing a project, when I'm working on, used to be working on somebody's house and, and doing X amount of work to it, and all of a sudden, there's something else that needs to be done, that was unforeseen, they didn't bid it out to somebody else, they just, you just go ahead and do it.
Well, in the private sector, you just choose who you, who you wish. I'm, I'm not sure that we can.
We can if, if, if it's your, the board's desire to. It's similar to when the courthouse did the historical grant the last time. And, you know, when they were waterproofing the foundation, and they uncovered the waterproofing, or uncovered the side of the building, and they found things that were more than what they had anticipated, then they, you approve a change order, either you do it or you don't do it, and then you move on.
So is this insurance covered or not?
No.
No. We don't have to do it.
You don't have to do it.
If you don't, if you don't do something back there, it's gonna rot away on you, and the cost is gonna be considerably higher than, than what it would be to wrap it up.
Is this for the nursing home?
Yes, it's a living, a living.
I think it's the entire.
Part of the nursing home.
Seven hundred and eighty feet of fascia and twenty-eight gable.
The guttering is part of the insurance.
I just don't understand how you're supposed to get around the statute that says if it's a remodel, or a repair, or anything, that it's to be bid out. It doesn't even give a dollar about.
It was bid out, this is an addition to the bid. An unforeseen thing. Like Don said, it's a damn, it happens on every job, everywhere. You hire someone to, to do something, and there's things in there that are unforeseen, and nobody sees them, that contractor's not gonna do it free if it's not part of this, of the original bid. We don't have to do it, it's up to you guys, but I think it ought to be done.
Is he saying there's not metal fascia, it's, it's wooden?
It's all blue right now.
It's wood.
And it's all.
Needs painted?
It all needs painted. If you drive by the assisted living side, it needs painted. But where they took the guttering off, apparently the water was running between the roof and the gutter, or between the fascia and the guttering. And so some of the fascia is destroyed. Which they can slap the guttering back up, and they will have the roof draining into the guttering like it's supposed to, but then you still have.
Deteriorated board underneath.
Yes. So it's a matter of, do we cover it with metal?
I would move that we authorize Corey to.
Do you have, do you have some numbers? He's got, she's got some.
Do you want to see a bid?
Yeah.
I just, we didn't want to. To supply a bid like we did the last time, if.
That should be part of the discussion, though.
Yeah. But I ask him to give us one as a scope of work.
So I'm saying he moved, are you gonna second?
Well, I'm.
I'm going to amend my motions for the dollar amount when I see it. I didn't realize we had a dollar amount.
Okay. Mike, as a side note here, I had a question. This bill we were receiving from Lincoln Park Manor is from February. That seems a little interesting.
Well, we want months on the ceiling fans in the courthouse. Before they submit a bill.
Okay. So.
Here, I'll, I'll put that in a moment. So I'm in my motion, or Don, I'll withdraw, I'm making another, and I'll move that we have Corey will fix the fascia on the rest home at a cost of fifty-three, a hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll second.
Then move the second discussion?
My discussion is my hesitation, not that you haven't done this in the past, but that I do not have counsel here to tell me that that is legal.
As a construction business, I'm just on my life, what you take, it happens all the time. Whether it's the county, or the city, or the private person, the bunch of same things that come up in jobs. Do everything go as planned on your house? No?
But what you're, you're having the county pay a bill for additional work outside of the bid that was done under the insurance coverage. So to me, that's questionable, is whether the county's actually paying for something without bidding it out, and it's a construction job. I mean, if someone wanted to be very nitpicky against this commission, we're leaving ourselves wide open so many times that it's scary.
Call for that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed?
Upstaying.
Anything else?
We received a financial statement or report from the public accountants for the hospital. Does that become public record since it's for the county?
My file, and it could be reviewed in my office.
I mean, that we have the end of the month meeting in evening time to encourage public participation.
Do I have a second? Well, if she dies, the lack of a second. This commission stands adjourned until Monday morning.
Get out here, time to watch the eclipse, Howard.